They're still not within their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
But still, they're just like any other property. Yeah, but I think they own like five hundred acres or something.
All the surround, the green parts surround.
But the button at the end of the room now is not green, it's red. And there's a car ticking, so it's going.
I think because they're what?
Okay.
Taxes, that if they don't.
At the end of the meeting. Okay, good.
That's different.
Thank you so much, sorry for the delay. It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
They should get right in lieu of taxes and equivalent amount for a compel amount.
Yeah, I've been driving on the road. Hi.
Hello. Yes, there is a conservation search on all of it. That puts development there for very low.
Sure.
So the tax generation.
Oh, it's kind of a different configuration. Sarah's not coming to like. But I didn't hear from, don't sit in that, I will kill you. I didn't hear from Paul, but I'm assuming he was here.
Paul saying be addressed. Coming up first, so like, pardon me, be addressed before they're done. It's only Jim.
I get that.
You remember?
Yes. What's your name is me to say?
Oh, I sent you an invoice today, do you need our copy of it?
I have it right here to submit to the accountant tonight, thank you Richard. We'll take an extra copy. We have it. Thank you. Sierra, did I understand that Jim, they have a prior meeting, he was gonna be late?
He said he might be a little bit late, so I don't know how.
Are we supposed to fill this out for the Board of Health?
The answer is yes.
They're making us do that here.
But he's not.
Oh, Jim's here.
Thank you.
I keep it over here. Yeah, we need this more. That area.
Um, so this is Jim joint meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe if you folks wanna pull your chairs maybe up over this way more so. The recording audience. They got a good look at you.
And everybody needs to do this for the Board of Health and tracking.
I guess they're tracking, so we've had a sign.
If there's a mountain. My two guys, get to the table. I didn't, I didn't get the, is that what Paul, I thought Paul was looking at us on the side. So the rest, fine. I'm not gonna sit in this like six minutes, but I'm using the first one. Listen to the size on this phone.
There's some other things, but I printed out all of them.
Hi, Jim. Yes, yeah, we do. Hi, Joey.
But yeah.
Well, we'll just play it by ear, but we'll get the housing end of it done first.
Passing it down, Joey. Do you want the I have the chipper?
I don't want anybody's back to the.
Yeah.
And Richard, you could probably turn around too somewhat.
Is Paul coming today?
Hi, Joey.
Hi.
I hadn't heard that he wasn't. I know Sarah is happy, she's ill. But I asked Sarah if she wanted to watch it on TV to.
Oh, Sarah's not.
Ask me any questions she has, discussion to.
So is this live or just tape?
No, it's live. It's the only way to be. The only way, the only way to be.
I can't hit her with a mask on.
Well, I don't wanna yell. Oh, you're doing up for that. Wow. In your, in your job. I just talk loudly.
You wanna be up here? Joey, is the table?
Fine, no, not at the table.
Okay.
Well, it's very exciting to be in the background.
Joey doesn't wanna be at the round table.
Because I was married last night, so I'm gonna thank you.
Cindy, can I join?
Paul, can you join?
I'm not here for the fun. You know.
Come on up.
That's why I.
I just don't want you back to the camera, that's why.
You wanna come up with.
This is only one. We have a. Ryan, we have a corner available.
He already told me if I sat on it would kill me.
Nobody wants baby in my corner, Paul.
Let me get Jim out here.
Does he need a chair? Well, Jim is sitting there, right?
I only know for Paul forgot the other quarter of upcoming, it should arrive.
You want, I'll put the chair over there.
He usually let you know when you come.
He's a little funny, he's prepared out, I'll take the clipboard, yeah.
It's getting cold out, you must be happy.
I was up in the snow this weekend, so.
Nice.
Up in the. Play just another couple feet and then, you know, ice base. My head is just hot. It's not important. Right now.
Cher, Jim.
Should go to next desk.
You're gonna miss next week, next week, second one.
We gotta build one.
Yeah, alright.
I'm gonna take it out of order because I want to start. So the housing people don't have to hang around. Well, I have 7:06, so I'm gonna open it up officially. Good evening, everyone, I was tuned in on Charter Channel 191. I'm gonna open officially the Southampton Planning Board meeting for December 1st. And this is a joint meeting with the Housing Authority. So I will open the meeting and officially, we have a quorum, Dan LaValle, myself, and Cindy Palmer. Paul Forgot is en route. Sarah Stein will not be making it tonight, but yet we have a quorum. So at this time, I will ask the Housing Authority Chairperson to open their meeting as well.
Thank you, Paul. Jim Seating, High Street, is Chair of the Southampton Housing Authority. Open this meeting also, this joint meeting, we also have a quorum. Sierra Stevens and Jim King with us. We're a board of five, although presently only three active, so all three of us are here for James Paul.
Paul will not be joining us, so we have a quorum on each. So Jim, there's yourself and Sierra, right?
Jim, Jenny King.
Sierra, what's your last name? Okay, and with us this evening is also Ryan Gilaheur, who is Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And also a developer in town. And with us are Board Consultant Richard Harris from South Hadley. So I'm gonna go out of the agenda, take it out of order, only because I don't want the Housing Authority folks hanging around all night long with other business that we have. So I'm gonna ask Richard to jump to the three sections that you're reformatting. Relative to housing, Section 770 inclusionary zoning, Section 780 cluster development, and Section 7110 multi-family dwellings. And.
Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's our intro, but it's point of order, I think we also need to mention that Joy is here as.
Oh, yeah, Joy is always with us as the liaison between the select board, sorry, Joy.
Don't worry, thank you.
So at this time, Richard, I'll ask you to weigh in on those three sections. Now, there might have been some misunderstanding about what we are covering tonight. And Richard can explain that, but I think as time goes on and he knows what some of the ideas are from housing about how they wanna approach affordable housing. Opportunities, that it's gonna take more work on his part and address it at a separate meeting. So I want you to explain what you were originally here for tonight and what you were planning on covering in the sections that you provided us.
The first task I'm working on is taking the existing zoning bylaw and reformatting, codifying it into a consistent systematic structure. As anybody who's looked at the existing zoning bylaw, you can recognize that there are some inconsistencies and not real fluidity to it. I'll say that. And as I've done that, I've also spoken for each of these sections and identified issues and questions I have. Concerns I have. Where there's just the question that like on inclusionary zoning, my suggestion is make it inclusionary house. So that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about including housing into commercial development, we're talking about how include different income levels into different housing types. And so make, change to inclusionary house. So I've basically just reformatted what you have. Really, do I make any substantive, I don't, if I make substantive changes, I note that. I also highlight references to state law, state code, other sections of the zoning bylaw, other bylaws. So that when we go back before we finish this up, I make sure that those references are still consistent, still correct. I know from my experience, in South Hadley, when we were working bylaws, we found that, oh, that regulation was changed 20 years ago. So the reference was no longer about reference. And that I'm working there secondary, there's had references, stuff that changed in 1999. So we try and highlight those, make sure that we catch those before we finish. And so I haven't changed subsequently anything here, but I do have a lot of questions. And I'll attempt at that. First of all, you had a second label omitted, second label separability. Those are necessary because the zoning bylaw only is one separability section that applies entire zoning bylaw. Don't need for each subsection of it. As I said, I think title needs be inclusionary housing, not inclusionary zoning. And it's got some really good ideas, really good substance in here, but it doesn't talk about the process of how you apply this to developments. And my gap, this thing through my approach would be that somewhere there needs to be in there in saying that whenever someone applies for a plenary, definitive subdivision, or a housing development through a site plan view or special permit, their application should include the documents to demonstrate compliance with this. And it, but needs to spell it out that way so that people know that, hey, yeah, we have a plot of this, but this is how you determine that's on your gap. And there's a reference to the definitions, and I suggest that should be deleted. Back in 771B. Yeah, there's a reference definition that need to be gone. I suggest breaking a sentence into two sentences, which I've done in here, to make it clear that's, that's I was being down. And there's a joint review of the Housing Authority and the Planning Board applications. But it doesn't say what the purpose that review is or, and I'm sure it is necessary, you probably have a joint review as much as the application is being reviewed by the Planning Board for special permit, site fund view, or subdivision. And it'd be better approach to have in the bylaw that the Planning Board shall request a review and recommendation from the Housing Board on the application in terms of reference to inclusionary house. Kind of like a consultant role. Or any other department. When the Planning Board reviews a subdivision plan, they ask the DPO superintendent for their input. When they ask, they were asked the building official for their input.
Police and fire.
Police, fire, soon. And I would suggest that this state that they shall ask the Housing Board for their input on the, on the inclusionary housing development that's being focused. And that way it's clear, it's not a joint review that you're advising them as to what your findings are on.
Just back up just a second on the process. Now Larry Smith, before he retired, a couple of years before he retired, drew up the zoning application packet that the zoning, or the building inspector would use for all kinds of permit applications. To my knowledge, it's been used once in two years. And it was for the marijuana store over on College Highway. But it had all the check marks that you just referred to about, you know, applying for zoning in there, and I'm assuming that if that zoning application is used, then there could be a box, if it isn't already in there, I don't have a copy of it with me right now, for inclusionary housing.
Right.
But it was pretty copious a packet, you may have already had one in South Hadley or seen them before.
Yeah, he showed me the, the basic uniform application.
Yes.
Yeah, and that would cover everything.
Right, yes.
And again, I think the process of how you do the review that as part of your permitting process needs to be spelled out.
But can I just ask, Ryan Gilaheur's only board, so they have for, there's a threshold on a subdivision that triggers that. So this is the problem we worked with Larry, you get into like the verbiage of this, like is there something that you put in that it, that it's, if that is triggered, or it's?
Yes.
Because if someone comes, I'm just scenario one, someone comes with a four lot subdivision, it doesn't trigger any of that.
Correct.
So it's like kind of redundant to go to them another step of the process when it, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Like so if there's verbiage in there that when it does so, or.
It would be, it, no, if.
You don't have to put a number, but just.
If the application triggers.
Right.
This section of the zoning bylaw, then the Planning Board shall ask the Housing Board to say.
So that way if the number changes, the ratio changes down the road, the verbiage is in there and it can go because a percentage of the.
You may start off as, let's say, on 10 lots, no, 10 lot subdivisions minimum threshold. And you may decide down the road that you're gonna trigger that five lot subdivision. But you just wanna have a language in there that if, if a proposed development would trigger this application.
Right.
This, this project, this section of your plan would be proposed development, the Planning Board shall.
Exercise, right. The Housing Authorities shall exercise.
The, the Planning Board shall, shall request the Housing Authorities' input on the application.
Sounds like, you know, the Planning Board's the primary.
Correct, they're the permanent entity for special permit, site fund view, subdivisions, and therefore they need the ones requesting your input.
Tell me something, did you have that in South Hadley where you were?
We didn't have inclusionary housing. We were working towards that, and we really concluded that it wasn't worth the effort because inclusionary housing will not get you towards 10%. It may help you from sliding further back. And one thing to look at very intently, and we spent a lot of time discussing this, was the payment in lieu of. And you have to decide what is your objective with the payment in lieu of. Is your objective to have the developer build affordable housing? And if so, then who's going to monitor that affordable housing? There's a lot of work that has to be done. And Larry said that PVPC staff were going to set up to do that, and they went through the training and decided, no, we aren't gonna do that, it just wasn't worth while. If your objective is to have the developer do, that, do actually build affordable housing, then you want you to set the form for payment in lieu of at a level that is more cost effective for the developer to build the housing than is to make the payment. If your objective is to generate funds for, at the affordable housing trust fund through it, then you need to make it more desirable than pay the fees than bill. Any developer is gonna make, they're gonna do their analysis of, okay, if I build this, it's gonna cost me X amount, and my return is gonna be at this level. Is it worth my, me do that, or is it cheaper for me to just make a payment? And get out of that, and get, and leave, and relieve it to me of a burden of having to build it and monitor it and arrange somebody to manage.
I thought one of the main issues of that, when it was discussed, the payment in lieu of, you really didn't want that because they could, sure, anybody could pay the money and say, okay, build it somewhere else, but the idea of it going forward was to have them integrated into that neighborhood. Not, okay, we'll pay so we don't get them in here type of thing.
But some would rather have, recognizing, you can, if you have a payment in lieu of that builds a affordable housing trust fund, you could use that money to leverage and build much more housing than you could.
Absolutely.
Just one in a 10 lot subdivision. Because you can use that to leverage federal grants and loans.
So not to get off the tracks, but last week, we, was it the meeting last week, we spoke, and you were talking about trying to create an account or a fund. Like I had asked, I had asked a question about, yeah, housing trust. So where, I guess like, if that's something that you do, I mean, I'm just talking very broadly, like that would need to be in place to be tied into this.
Yes.
Yeah, is it, is it possible, so if that changes sometime in the next year or so, do we need to write this so that it refers to the situation we have now, which is I guess we don't have to pay them, pay to the CPA fund until we have a housing trust?
Or can we have a gift fund set up instead of a housing trust at this point?
You can set up affordable housing trust fund very simply through Town Meeting Nation.
Yeah.
And then it's on folks.
Yeah.
Uh, so that one, if you win with inclusionary housing and went that approach, you would set that up as part as a, not a article of town meeting.
But that's the goal, is to create a housing trust. In the fact of the.
So we got into lengthy debate in South Hadley about. How to do that. And eventually we said, no, we spent a lot of time on it, and we thought of how many subdivisions we already have that would be triggered by it, very few. Didn't have that much housing development going on, and we said, was it really worth the, the plan was timed? And the Planning Board members said, no, we can come back and visit that another, another day.
But what percentage of South Hadley?
About 100%. Like five and a half, 5.3.
Okay, and Southampton's at. For.
For Ohio. Yeah, so we're at less than two, and we're at zero for owner occupied.
But it doesn't matter, nothing.
So you own occupied for.
But no matter, it's just.
Yeah, I wanna look at, in the population, the South Hadley is 25,000, 30,000?
No, about 17,000, five.
Okay, so seven, 18,000, anywhere 6,000, so.
And we're about to have a 60 units of apartment building built this spring that's under check 40R. That's fine, it's. Your additional minority of town.
Yeah, the Big Y or whatever that.
So another question, I thought that when there's an affordable housing house that's built, that the deed specifies that. So therefore, there's a management issue, I understand that, but nonetheless, it's stated in the deed that this property has to meet the criteria for the, the owner has to make, or the occupant has to meet the criteria of affordability.
The owner has to, if it's gonna be a for sale, unoccupied, then de-restricted that the owner has to meet the requirements. Somebody has to go through the process of managing that and monitoring that, make sure that occurs. The other aspect, and reason we have not pushed in South Hadley for unoccupied affordable housing is this. If you try and reach 10%, when you do unoccupied, only the owner occupied de-restricted units count towards 10%. So if you do a 60 unit condo development, say, and of that number, 25%, 15% are de-restricted for unoccupancy, low money income households. Only those 15 units count. If it's a rental development, all 60 units count towards your 10% goal. On subsized housing and 40. Therefore, if a community's objective is to try to reach the SHI of 10% and therefore have a way to combat an aggressive 40B project, the strategy needs to be to promote rental housing. And I have, I've tried a great way by doing 72 units at the old Big Y, calls 72 units South Hadley, we give the town a two-year safe harbor. 60 units gets us one, you gotta find another 12 units to build it up to two.
So one of the limits we have in Southampton is the infrastructure limit. We can talk about ad nauseam, and that's the big difference in South Hadley, which you do have too. So it changes the equation, in my opinion.
It definitely does.
Quite a bit. So, you know, for me, that said, I think we need to keep that in mind. I also, I don't know if South Hadley has a housing trust, but it was my understanding, one of the functions of the housing trust was. I don't know if South Hadley has a housing trust, but it was my understanding, one of the functions of the housing trust was to take on some of that management of the deed. For the, you know, affordable units to make sure that it's still like.
If you have the staffing to do that. Uh and uh most small town like South Hadley, the housing trust don't have any staff, it's it's a young.
Preserved, preserved.
Uh and.
So there's no trustees, there's just a housing trust?
Yeah, it's, you have trustees, but they don't have skills.
Right, right.
Staff necessary to do the monitoring, uh that's very extensive on making sure it maintains the SHI requirement.
But but a project like Big Y, that Big Y project is gonna be run by wayfinders, which has a staff, an office, specialists, consultants.
Consultants.
That's what we have.
That do, they're right, they do all that stuff.
And. And most fundamentally, the it's on forty R, you have to have a way to monitor and it has to be monitoring agent. And the way we structured it was that the funding entity would serve as the monitoring agent. Because the funding entity for those type of homes had to monitor anyway.
Right.
And therefore. We we're gonna work with them to that or town will work with them to have them do the monitoring part.
I think perhaps another thing to consider is again the difference between South Hampton and South Hadley is is the numbers.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when we talk about. It it might be some, you know, a degree of expertise to manage these these deeds, et cetera, but also just a matter of time. You know, and if you're looking at sixty units, seventy units versus three, you know, there's a difference in the time investment here, um which so.
Yeah.
I just wonder if we might be able to given expect the numbers which we hope to go up, but we might be able to manage it locally through the local housing trust.
That may be, and maybe the housing authority.
Yes.
But HDC has, I know from my part on on discussions with housing authority and D H C D. D H C D always has concerns about local housing authorities. Taking on more stuff, cause D H C D is not compatible, take on anything.
Right, we had similar recommendations that the the housing trust shouldn't be managed by the housing authority.
Right.
It should be separate, um and there should be select board member representation and you can get, you know, you can appoint people from town. You guys volunteers who can help with this, and that was the recommendation for small town.
So the percentage is based off of the income, not on the number of units, not on the populations, correct?
Right.
Percentage of what?
Percentage of what?
For the ten percent, the.
Two cents based upon the number of uh year round housing that you have.
Year. E okay, so the total number of houses in the town, then it's.
Year round housing.
Year round housing, then it's based off the percentage of that.
Right.
Yes.
So if we have two percent. If we had five houses, what is that gonna multiple?
Around here, plus your current house, uh total housing stock.
It's around twenty five hundred, I think.
Around about hundred?
Four hundred, so.
The new percent is twenty five.
Right, so we're looking at marginal increases, but one of the things that the state recognizes is the effort. They see movement.
It's a goal, right.
Right, they see an effort, they see that the town has created a housing trust, they see that they're adding some units, that there's an active housing authority, et cetera. That means something more to the state than.
No, no, right, but I just, I wanna bring up that the elephant in the room, that it's like to get from two percent to ten percent.
Oh, yeah.
It's a hundred fifty or two hundred units, so people, yeah, so people know exactly like, it's not three, you know, cause that's a, to me, that's an attainable goal.
It's a sewer. Right.
Two hundred units in ten years without sewers.
Right, we're fighting the fight a lot of towns.
That's, I mean. Right.
And 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 when you talk about, you know, the towns and the hill towns that don't have the infrastructure either, you know, they're, it's the same about.
Right.
To your point, yes.
It's it's a classic case that you have, what we have in Massachusetts is Boston, the the lesser passed the law. That applies to everybody and they don't think about the real inside of uh four ninety five. They think everybody is like us and they're not like inside four ninety five. There's a wide diversity and there's resource limitations, not only infrastructure but financial. And uh they don't recognize that and pass laws. But yeah, so so I think there.
We can have.
Now, there is that reality that the best way to. Work towards inclusion of housing model is define what the objective is, if it is in fact as you suggest. That you want to be sure that there's affordable housing and integrated into each of these developments that qualify. Then you wanna have be sure payment lieu that does not uh encourage them to make a payment, encourage them to build units. And and recognize that unit can't be outwardly distinguishable from the other units.
But but the flip side of that coin too is if you can make it attractive and it's somewhat fair and equal to that, and you set up a housing trust, correct Jim? And you're able, like we talked about it, I, you know, I brought that house up on High Street that was for sale as an example. You could acquire it and you're able to go in there and renovate it and do it and you might have, you know, how that works, I I'm not familiar with this lottery system or however. And you know, one house might need to be ADA compliant a hundred percent, another house doesn't, so you can kind of retrofit that where. The, in the subdivision, it, you know, there there's one or, you know, I don't see, except for the one that's on the table. Many twenty five or thirty lot, because the tracks, if you really look at the maps in town. You take a good hard look with the hurdles of natural heritage, wetlands, riverfront protection, I mean, the list goes on. You can take a twenty five track, twenty five acre track piece of land. Because of all those struggles, you're still to six or seven, and people ask that, why can't you, it can't be done. So, I mean, I I know what you're saying, but I think it's like kind of, if it's running parallel, I think you're gonna get some participation. I mean, like the sidewalk fund is an example, now, I'm gonna go back to the developer fees, when that came up, I thought that was a fantastic idea. And I said, I said to Paul, I'm like, I'm totally on board, a subdivision that's eight hundred feet long does not need two sidewalks. I've lived in them, everybody walks in the street, sometimes they walk on the sidewalk. So I ended up cutting a check for that sidewalk fund, and I think the other developer next to me did as well, so that raises money. And I see like in town, like they're gonna connect that piece of sidewalk from um the old valley farms down to the top of the hill. And there's other pieces in town that we connect and we can use that money. And it's, it's like how you can spend the money and and put it in in better channels and avenue, you know what I'm saying? Cause, cause if you get a developer that says, okay, I could do twelve. And I could donate, you know, money in lieu of, and you guys have some houses teed up and we could create. An inventory and some stock and it would fit into the the town, we'd fit into the neighborhood, cause I don't. I don't think it's necessarily like there's, there's one spot, I mean, what if nobody does a development for seven years, so.
Can I make a follow on comment?
Sure.
I've been really thinking about this that a lot the past week about why, and and Paul partially answered the question. Why do you all, why do we single out developments to try to fund the affordable housing? When. It, to me, it it would make sense if you say, what about all new housing? Would require.
I I don't.
To a tribute to this fund. That would, that would eliminate that, that um, I guess, problem of, well, we're only gonna build this many houses or this many houses. It's like, it'd be a smaller percentage and it doesn't always apply just to developers, it applies to all housing town, so.
But correct me if I'm wrong, if you took a tract of land, Paul, and had twenty frontage lots, that triggers, triggers, that triggers the inclusionary of ten, correct?
But I'm, but I'm saying it's.
I'm, so you're talking onesies twosies is what.
Uh no, I'm saying, no matter how many houses are being built, just a single house, some.
It's a taxation.
Some taxation would be applied that would be put into this uh this trust fund, this fund, or as it's called. Same as it would be if you're a developer, like why you're sing, why do you single out your developers to to have to pay a tax?
You're singling out a developer because they're gonna go through the process and do the project like wayfinders. I don't know the project, I'm gonna guess, is there a traffic light there already?
Yeah.
Okay, if there wasn't, wayfinders be putting one in.
Right.
And that would be part of the development, so it's, it's the old, take the developer and kind of strongarm him into getting some things that you want. River Valley Market, they got a Mass Works grant, they got a road widening there. So they were able to obtain some money, but DOT is like you need a turn lane in there because it's gonna be too crazy, they were able to get some money. I could tell you if they didn't get the Mass Works grant, River Valley Market would have been doing it themselves, so it's, I mean, there's. That's the power of the planning board.
Yeah.
And your board as well that has that, to do it on a single family lot or, ah, I don't know, that, I don't know anytime that.
There's also a substantive chance we're probably not gonna be going in this round yet.
It's just a question on that, I've been pondering and wondering, why is always the subdivision?
You also have issues that you'd have to run on ten score. Uh you touched on that's taxation, that really does sound like a tax on each new house. And you have to be careful with doing that, cause state law may not like do that for it. It's easy to do it when you have a threshold and that everybody within this threshold meets it. But then say everybody doing the house has to pay into this fund. That is like a, that does sound like a tax or like an additional uh uh impact fee. And Massachusetts is not very fond of impact.
But not when it's a subdivision, it's like, to me, it's like the same thing, right?
It applies subdivision, it can apply subdivisions of multifamily developments.
Same place.
Uh but yeah, that that's uh but you mentioned people like wetlands, that doesn't linger in count in South Hadley, people kept saying. Twenty years ago, they looked at this piece property and nobody, and they couldn't build there, yeah, they couldn't, but all the good properties are gone. And now they're taking like we like we we considered trash properties twenty, thirty years ago. And they're shoehorning things in. And they're doing two or three or four lot subdivision, or they're finding a way to A and R that they couldn't find before. And uh and that's what, that's what tends to happen. Uh and we we've uh we've had, I was there twenty two years. And I think we only had maybe. Four subdivisions of ten lots or more in twenty two years. And they had a lot more multifamily development, like their condos, but uh even that started to get uh running down, cause. The spaces weren't there and people were pushing back and now there's a dense cap outside of forty yard distance, so.
So I think our big issue is that our inclusionary model is not effective, so you know, perhaps they have to, as we said, so they stop at nine, the builders stop at nine houses. So they put one on the street and then the other nine inside, and so it doesn't really count. So I guess we need to determine if it's not effective and if reducing the number of houses only is is not gonna be, you know, the right decision. Maybe we need to decide is just raising the monies to help build their funding into our housing trusses. Not that they builders would be willing to in lieu of give us money, I don't know about that either, but it's gotta be.
Go back and look at how you define what qualifies. Because. They should be able to segregate off A and R lots out of parcel. It should be such that if there is a parcel on X date. And it is subsequently divided, whether it's through a subdivision process, A and R process, multifamily development process, or have you, that results in ten more housing units. It should, it would fly and typically does, when you do it that way, like you do a stormwater, for instance. If a developer comes in and they clear off a half acre property. And then two years later, they clear off, they're joining three quarters of acre property, well, they triggered, they did uh three quarters acre. They trigger stormwater for the entire property. Inclusion of housing should be start the same way. So that if they have this twenty acre piece of property and they come out and they do a four lot subdivision. And then a year later, they call off two A and R lots, and then a year after that, they did another five lot subdivision.
Five years, after you do the first one, you have to.
Right.
It's five years.
So so it should be a capture those if that happened, if they did that way, but it's A and R or the subdivision or whatever.
Yeah, whether it's A and R or it's, it's created by the subdivision, it's after ten, it triggers it, but it's five years, if you do that, it's approved.
Wasn't also, Ryan, um. The inclusionary that we wrote. If you, if you included um affordable housing in your development, then it lowered lot size and you're able to get.
Yeah.
Just like the carrot stick approach, if you do this, then we'll give you more units.
Yeah.
You give, you reduce the frontage by twenty.
Fifteen to twenty feet, I think, something like.
Yeah, twenty percent, whatever, yeah, the number, it does, it does trigger that, so it helps you mix more dens.
And give.
Yeah, it it make the economics, the economics.
The question we kept running into in South Hadley, I'm not sure what the situation here is like. But developers couldn't get the maximum, the the zone out anyway. Because wetlands, slope, trying to do roadways, et cetera, stormwater. And therefore, if you try to give them a dense incentive. It is on paper only, cause reality is they couldn't achieve it. Now, without septic tank, the without sewer center, sewer service, the questions, does the use lot frontage. Give enough incentive to the developer to be able to convict that offset their uh costs? Cause remember, they're gonna sell the house for less than they're gonna sell. The others. And so in fact, the other houses have to help offset the the cost of the affordable house.
Well, anything under forty or forty four thousand square feet is a minimum of three bedroom, cause pretty much the whole town is on the aquifer. So you're held to that threshold, so you can't build a four bedroom home unless, I think it's Fort, the Barnes Aquifer.
Yeah.
Four forty two thousand, so it it's a great concept, you shrink, but you're, you shrink the lot, you shrink the house, you know, you're kind of.
Right.
Everything's kind of.
You shrink the lot, you don't necessarily have to shrink the house, I mean, we see what's happening in the Bay State section of North Hampton where.
But you can't, per the septic, you can't have a four bedroom.
Right. But doesn't that depend on the soil conditions, is it?
It's, I'm ninety nine percent sure, pretty much the whole town, if you're in the, I know if you're in the aquifer, that's what it is, and I think.
Yeah.
Like seventy, eighty, I think maybe crook, not crooked ledge, but like upper Pellegrini's is, let's say up there, that is not maybe.
Right.
But I know this side, Hampton Bombs over here is all on the aquifer.
But. So four bedroom, three bedroom, if 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 that's restricted to three bedroom regardless. Help me understand how a smaller lot with the same size house, you're still built, you're still limited to three bedrooms, so I, I'm not connecting those dots.
As far as if you can't build a four bedroom house, it's it's, and I'm talking.
Well, how the four bedroom house came came part of the discussion, because if it's, if it's not allowed.
Because he's talking about not having sewer in in the septic and you're shrinking the lot, so I just, I'm I'm bringing to the table as a reminder that there are. You can shrink the lot and you can do that, but you can, you have to shrink the, the, you know, the septic because of the square footage. They want a certain square footage based off the septic and the septic is based off the number of bedrooms.
And there's a minimum threshold that you can actually build and like a farm.
Right. So just, so you can't build a four bedroom or a five bedroom house on a thirty thousand square foot lot over, let's say. On, I don't know, somewhere over off of Bissinat, if if you don't have an acre of the forty two thousand square feet of land. And.
Right, but I'm still having trouble understanding, I'm sorry, Ryan, but.
No, that's fine.
Help me understand, how does a smaller lot, if you can't do it because of the aquifer, you can only build a three bed?
Yeah.
You can only build a three bedroom, whether you're building out a three acre lot or a half an acre.
No, you can, you, after forty thousand, you can go to a four bedroom and I think what, I don't know, it's fifty or sixty or a five bedroom.
I see.
You could, it continues to grow, you need more space because of the recharged area for the.
And you can't reduce the room lot size below a certain level and delete that, because it has to be at least forty thousand, I'm guessing.
Right, I appreciate you clarifying.
Yeah, so like Bay State or or North Hampton, you talk like the uh, yeah, the sewer, like the old state hospital, perfect example. Those houses, those lots are what, fifty by fifty? Those houses, those lots are what, fifty by fifty or, you know, for sake of conversation, it's all sewer up there.
Yeah.
So they're able to do that because they're not triggered by the septic. If that wasn't the case, you know, there'd be definitely more space between those sets.
So you're saying that there's, there's bylaws in town that limit that based on the aquifer and not based on the soil conditions of the lot?
It's based off, as far as I understand, it's based off the aquifer, which isn't triggered, I think, by the, is it the DEP or or whoever, you know, for the state is handling that. I just, I've done it, I know it very well, and you know, that's the threshold, like a lot of people come to town, they wanna build a four bedroom house, they have three kids, they want a master and they want everyone to have their own bedroom, so it's like, it seems that four bedroom is like that.
There's.
That attractive.
The Ryan said on, there's two fact, there's two different steps. The zone determines the minimum lot size. So you don't, you have to let at least forty thousand square foot, let's say. Soils gets anywhere on perks. And if you may have a two acre piece property that has bad soils, and they can't build it, build there either. Uh, but even if it has perfect soils and it's under the forty thousand square foot, they can't build. So you have to meet both those standards, the lot size and soils.
And you're saying that's a mass DEP, they met a local.
It's, it's two, I think, like Bay Pac, but the aquifer, there's like multi, multi aspects of it, but it's.
Yeah, different, different agency.
Yeah.
So it's not just a town you decide to.
No.
Not that.
No, it's Westfield's the same way.
Uh, the ability to control that is limited, so.
Right, Westfield is the same way right across the border.
You have, what we have is a water supply protection district that is grown based upon, my presumption is mass DEP. It's nature group area, yeah. So the recharge area is the, the water supply protection district is done based upon the, where the water supply comes from. And that is usually determined based on analysis by the EP consultants. And they have, they have the model bylaw that is used throughout, that basically sets a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size in those areas without septic. And then you have DPH, which sets the perk requirements for septic tanks. And also requirements for separation between septic and wells.
So I appreciate you helping me understand that. It's now, it comes full circle back to Paul's observation, which is, isn't there something in the inclusionary that, you know, if if, you know, you build affordable, we can sweeten the deal by shrinking the lot size, you can put more units in, but that's, that's again, probably an idea that comes beyond the town, like let's do this like a state suggestion. It doesn't take into account, we don't have infrastructure, we don't have sewer, and we have these DEP regulations set the bylaw. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, but I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't get into the vertical aspect professionally, but you're not typically building four bedroom.
Now, typically it's three bedroom house.
Yeah, at max, so.
It could have some applicability to shrink the lots of this.
Are there any other, are there any other incentives we could offer instead of, uh, not just the uh decreased lot size? Is there any other regulations we can um ameliorate? We have control. Yeah, anything we have control of that we can make it more of an attractive option?
Usual outside is the number one and cause the look at yield. So the, what we're trying to do is basically allow a developer to get a twenty percent increase in number of lots. So that helps offset the low price they can have for the four year.
You could take the, I'm gonna say Cumberland Farms or the RE project, whatever you wanna call it, that's thirty-nine units. I looked up the map from the meeting. You put sewers in there, you're gonna be sixty-five, seventy units all day long with the inclusionary. Because you're able to shrink things down, you don't need the space for the septic. You could basically model something of many things that Northampton has or East Hampton has.
Why do you need the best for the septic?
Yeah, for the, for the septic, because with the septic, you have the actual system, then you have a reserved area, so you need additional space.
Right, I see. Why, why can you get more in there? Because you still have the septic.
I think what Ryan's saying, should we get even more in there?
If you had sewer, hypothetically, if you had sewer.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's part I missed.
Yeah, no, if, yeah, I'm sorry, if you had sewer, I'm just using example.
Okay.
You'd be, you know, I looked at it quick, sixty-five, seventy in my head, like all day long, that that would, that would work.
Yes.
Right.
And I think, you know, it's, I feel like sometimes we're beating a dead horse in a way, but the septic is like the biggest in the cost. Because when you come and do a sixty unit, and I've worked on projects like that professionally, and put septic systems in for projects like that. It's a wastewater treatment plant is what it is.
I agree.
Yeah.
And you're north of a million to a million and a half all day long. And everybody in this room has a septic and everybody knows, I don't know if you do, but everybody knows how it goes. If you get twenty, twenty-five years having your septic and you had two or three kids and you live there, you got a lifetime out of it. I mean, everybody probably in this room has had to replace or upgrade or at some point, unfortunately, you're gonna have to, it just, it's the load and the usage and it goes in cycles with families.
There's a big complex behind Cumberland, we've got their own.
Yeah, we put that in, that's a wastewater treatment plant, yeah.
That's expensive.
And that, that's how, in this type of environment, that's how you build multifamily is you do your own package plan.
Right.
We had a uh, uh, common of.
But it's not for, it's not for, it's not for life. You put, you put sewers into the Cumberland Farms and we run it out.
It becomes a life station basically.
Yeah, that PVC pipe is gonna last infinite, eighty years, so it's, you pay the fee to hook up. You know, you wipe, you wipe your hands of it. I mean, I know we've done work in towns and you go by, and we run sewer, their project in Amherst, it was eight hundred dollars to hook up. I mean, they ran sewer by my house for eight hundred dollars and kissed the guy who put it in, yeah. Because the, the septic system, you know, your, your private six thousand right out of the chute for something minor.
We had a common opponent propose for water supply protection district back in two thousand six, two thousand seven. We approved it after three peer reviews of the uh sewage disposal system. Essentially, what they're doing is putting a package plan in, they, it's a uh septic disposal system there. And thirty-six units, thirty to thirty-six units. And it didn't ever get built, partly because of what happened in two thousand eight. But also because of the level, what they had to do to maintain that system. The condo fees drove up such that the purchase prices had to be in the half million range. Well, in two thousand six, that was okay. When they got ready to try to break ground in two thousand eight, there, there's no way. They had, they had, I think, eight deposits they had to refine because just goes in one block. Uh, not with the, that type purchase price and the associated condo fees.
Yeah.
You gave that a little.
I'm not a side factor.
No, that's, no, that was good, it was good discussion. Um, what I'd like to do is just have you go through your questions and comments on that, and then at the end of that. Mark down questions for Richard to um follow up for some future research about this, this bylaw.
Section uh, uh, D four. It provides that the planning board may take donation land. Uh, but what authority is highest question, what authority is planning board have to take a donation?
Well, I think we already covered that by the housing trust, right?
But this donation land, it says money.
Donation of land?
Yeah.
That's how the old one was, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and the planning board can set land, but they, only town meeting can set land. And uh, may select board, but I think town meeting has to actually take ownership of it.
So that's gotta be changed.
Yeah, so I raised that because this is in this bylaw and I think that's from this.
Jim, just one thing, nothing for Richard, but one thing to think about is, we gotta think about the verbiage of how do you word if we're trying to get payment in lieu? Because it, I, so I'm sure Paul has told you, we've been working on this for what, three years?
Do you have a date?
Uh, yeah, the whole zoning bylaws.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, in two years, we're at the point where putting a pretty red ribbon on and bringing it to the select board, very hopeful. That when we choose that, I don't think it's like we can use a dollar amount, it's gotta be based off, you know, some kind of index that it's, so so this is gonna grow with us as time goes on.
Right, if you put a fixed figure, it doesn't apply in a year to ten years.
Right. If you say two hundred fifty thousand example today, in twenty-five years from now. It, you know, is it exponential? Of course, it's, it's, things never seem to go down, it always goes up, so like just some food for thought, we need to kinda.
We ran into that issue as well, and we did a lot of research, and it's, I have in some DPC about how different communities index it.
Yeah.
And mostly don't.
Because that's why.
Everybody should, um, and I, my answer is as well, it's been the index of either through the uh, uh, what destruction means index or use some type of uh, uh, median household or something in household.
Uh, just, right, you tie it into something very local.
Right, because.
And then you do your market sense of what's going on and it's a percentage of that, and it's a percent.
Right.
Currently, currently it's three times the eighty percent median household income for a four person household.
For median household for, for Hampton County, right?
Yeah.
Why is it based off of Hampshire County or Northampton?
It's actually based off the Springfield, that's just how Bud sets it up.
Right.
Like, like.
It's not in that county, it's by.
Yeah, Bud comes up by the view, about the AMI, how is that determined?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's based on the.
Bud does that, um.
Okay, so yeah, I think as long as we have something that's gonna move and grow with the town.
Right.
Because otherwise, we put this together, we send it off and we have that dollar amount ten years from now.
Right.
You're gonna have developers coming in because the number should be four fifty and they're gonna go, here, here's your check for two fifty.
Some way to.
You're doing a twenty-five lot subdivision, how do I stand?
We don't have it defined by dollar amount now, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, is that, it's assumed that it's the annual median household, and we don't need to be explicit with that, do we?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay, so annual, right now it's a.
It doesn't say annual.
But we don't have to index it that way.
No, but I'm just, I, I'm not giving a suggestion of this talking out loud that we need to look at as a big picture, because.
Yeah, you can't do a fixed lot.
Right, because then it comes to the planning board, ten years down the road, we're all off these boards and, you know.
On page three, section four D, it talks about the annual uh, uh, my uh fee, the negotiator. Uh, it doesn't, it, you don't negotiate the septic, right? Um, but this.
Negotiate is like a check is negotiated, like pay.
Uh, and this, and this is written for unoccupied. It's not written based upon why it is gonna be rented. Because it says prior to sale the first year. So I think that it needs to be revised to apply.
Failure rental.
Sell or rent. And uh.
You have a separate section for rental versus.
Yeah, I would suggest if you set, that we have owner fee and there'll be owner and there'll be rental and it'll address it that way. The uh, let's see, four E, E six. This raised question mainly, the four units may be in form of duplex. That suggests they could be a different style than the rest of the houses. DC, you won't allow that. It need be in, uh, it, it, it can be indistinguishable, it need be indistinguishable. So you can't say it can be a duplex and the other is single family.
So I think you can, um, we were given a lot of examples from NPH about how you do this, how you can make affordable units fit a neighborhood. By having, you know, the market rate units might be, you know, I don't know, thirty-five hundred square foot homes or whatever. And the affordable units could be a duplex that have the same footprint, the same look, maybe even a single driveway that then splits in the back or something, so the look is the same, but you have a duplex.
But they gotta be indistinguishable.
Exactly, well, and, and you have.
This doesn't say.
Okay, so it just need to spell it out.
That it would have to be.
We're being indistinguishable, essentially.
Yeah, fitting in, in, in harmony with the neighborhood.
Right, because indistinguishable, I don't know, that's a subjective, that, that means they have to look exactly the same, um. I have a little.
It can't be looked at, it can't be able to look at it from the outside and, you know, take that as the affordable unit.
Yeah.
That's that.
Yeah.
That's the.
So it doesn't think that's like.
Because if you put a big red X on that, everybody looks at it and says.
The squirrel.
You don't, you don't want to buy the house here or here, because that's the affordable units that you can be desired.
Nicely, nicely finished front and cardboard in the back.
To Hollywood Sound.
Indistinguishable from the road.
There you go.
Yeah.
Keep going, Richard.
Okay, uh, five D. Marketing plan, who's approved of the marketing plan? Who's, my question with that is, does the town have somebody that's qualified to view and act upon a marketing plan? No. And what standards will you use for that, uh, for?
Is there?
I think there, I think there was being, was being attempted here. And I think there's some, that they have to have marketing, and I think it, it can be uh written a little bit differently. So it's not the towns I'm put in position of having approved a marketing plan, but I, and I.
Wouldn't the trust just fund the, or the.
That's what I was gonna say.
Do that, if they're, they're already.
Good thing.
If they're gonna be managing that, then they do the marketing as well, so, uh.
Develops them to mark, but yeah.
They could approve the marketing.
Sorry.
Right.
Or, or, or set for a third party review.
That would be the best thing is that, in fact, that's what I want to suggest is for the housing aspect of it. That'd be a peer review, that you didn't want to hire a consultant that has specialty in for the housing to view the proposed uh elements.
Okay.
Let's see. Eight A. I think that needs to be part of the policy and not specified in the bylaw. Um, I mean, that's, there, there's some aspects in here that really is more appropriate for subsidies and procedures and not in the bylaw itself.
Yeah, that stuff should be planning board related. We're getting involved in that.
And again, I think section seventy point eight really only addresses houses for sale and not rental. And while I recognize South Hampton is from South Hattie, Northampton is Hampton. I think you need to have a inclusionary housing file that reflects the diversity of housing types, rental and.
So who.
Does that opt on the table she presented something?
Right.
So who has a good, good one for rentals, South Hattie or Hampton?
Not South Hattie, but there's different models out there that I can pull from. And those are my comments and, but I'm thinking I could start on a thing I understand more at Ford, I'll avoid.
So do you have to reiterate anything to Richard about, uh, down the road on the inclusionary? You think you've covered it all?
Well, I would just go back to where Janet was when she brought up, I think the very salient point that what we have now isn't working as far as creating affordable housing. Um, and so whether, having a hard look at the, the number, which is ten. Or looking at certain aspects of it, like, you know, the five year piece where you could start and build so many units and wait five years and then continue to build more and you, is that something to look at also? Those, those would be my questions. I don't know if that's what flew along the lines you were.
Yeah, I mean, or it is a purpose to, to build the housing trust and know that one by one by one, we're not gonna get to our number anyway.
We're not, the inclusionary housing is not gonna get you to ten percent.
No.
No.
The best I can do is keep it from sliding back.
So whether we put some fail safes is what Jim's question is.
Right, because, and I would say.
How do we not?
I think it's unrealistic to look at the ten percent, but I don't think we should not be trying to increment. I think it's unrealistic to look at the ten percent, but I don't think we should not be trying to incrementally move forward, even if it's ones or twosies at a time. This is me personally, and it's just one vote, I'm not really to let go of that. Because I think we need to demonstrate that we're trying, that we're making, we're accomplishing something. Cause if we strictly focus on building our account, we already have a pretty good amount of money, we can't seem to spend it. So I'm less enamored by the idea of funding more, for what? We need to move the bar.
If that money is just around how you can find somebody else live.
But but if if you have that money and you create the housing, so essentially what we've created, it works to a small degree. It you got two percent, you don't have zero, so we gotta be.
But we didn't get it to our.
But it didn't get it to be.
No, no, I.
No, I I I understand that, but.
Cause I wiped it off the recent sufficient.
I no, I know, I understand that, but I'm saying is that, so it's the glass half full, so so if this really is not working per se. Then what will work? So what options? So if we create that housing trust, right? And we try to go down that avenue, and I think if you have goals, so what you're saying, Jim, is you'd like to see an eight or a ten, kind of like out of the chute in two or three years, is that? Am I understanding that correctly? Eight or ten units? Not one.
Yeah, I don't wanna put a number on it, but I'd like to see more than what we've got, you know, I.
Right, but it's the the old slow and steady, so it's.
Right.
If we create the housing trust and we can do, if you're doing one every eighteen months and you're buying something that you're bringing back up to code and doing. I mean, i- is that is that a viable option too? Because you've parked this money.
Right.
And it's like a kid in a candy shop. We gotta spend it, we want, we wanna do something, we wanna, we wanna use it. So if it's in there and you do that model for three or five years and it doesn't work, or it's not getting to the numbers that you want. Is there a way that that trust, you know, can that trust be created and 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 be both? Can can purchase real estate and or land or team up with the like, is that is that an option?
Well, ideally, yes.
Cause you're one dimensional with where your money is right now, correct?
Right, so the the housing trust in creation of it is to me a separate thing, that needs to happen because we have some money. And we need to put it in a housing trust so that it becomes liquid, it becomes fluid and we can use it.
Right, so you can do that.
So I think the issue where you're coming from is, you know, does it, an even more beefed up housing trust fund give us more options to get where we wanna be? Versus versus relooking at, you know, some numbers on the inclusion area. I don't have an answer for that, but I don't know if they're necessarily one or the other, either, we have to choose.
But right, so so we have to look at the options, you know.
Are you are you really solely focused on inclusionary and have you have you not considered multifamily or condos or?
Or duplex.
As I said a couple of weeks ago on the the meeting that we had.
Yeah.
The things that are doable seem to me.
Yes.
You can do fairly quickly, the inclusionary, the inclusionary is is gonna get bogged down.
Agreed. Yeah.
And it is already bogged down, I don't think it's gonna come out of that anytime soon. So if if you can focus maybe on some of the other areas that were brought up during the meeting with Ken Kromia, then.
Well, agreed, I thought we were just talking about inclusionary.
Well, yeah, we're gonna move on to others, but I just thought don't get stuck on the inclusionary, right.
Yes. Just. No, I agree with you totally, there's 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 a few buttons to push.
But what would it take to get that money, big picture? I just feel like your hands are tied and you can just. And I don't know enough about how it's set up, but it seems to me from what I've heard from you on both sides that we can do one thing with it or two things with it. But there's other potential options that you're not able to do, so how do we, and I mean, that's probably Joy, like you get into the accounting side and where the funding comes from, all that. How do we open up, if if you could open up your doors and have seven choices instead of two choices, it's gonna help. Cause it's taken however many years to accumulate that money and get there. I'm sure it's based, you can get more money or more grants if you're spending and you're doing projects and there's movement. But if you're stale and you're stagnant, you're not doing anything, I'm sure the state looks at it, I'm gonna guess, they're not gonna say, oh, we're gonna give Southampton another million and a half, cause they've done so much. Like it's, you know what I'm saying? Like we've got a, we've got some momentum, it's just how do we free up and look at? You know, some of these options.
Can I ask a question, Ryan?
Sure.
Because a couple of times when people, developers have come to the planning board with their plans for their subdivision, it always seems to stop at the at the nine, you know? If they were to, if the number was to change in the bylaw to say the trigger for inclusionary housing is gonna be seven. Would developers just start building subdivisions of seven?
So.
That that's the thing that.
Right, i- is there, I can't speak for everybody, so I'm gonna go back to as a developer, so Fitch Farm Land, all I could get was nine in there. Because I wanted large lots, it's on the offer, people wanted four bedroom houses, that's all I could get. If I could have got ten or eleven or fourteen or fifteen and created a Red Bull, Red Brook, that's a totally different scenario. And I had said this to Paul, and I know we've spoken, like, if the project's right and it makes sense, you know, I paid into the sidewalk fund because I wanna be the first guy to do it. The affordable equation, if it's right and it makes sense and I have the 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 thing that could work, I'm on board to to take a stab at it and and to try it. But if you're held by the restrictions, to answer your question, I could not put any more lots.
Alright.
If if I went to the inclusionary, it would have shrunk them down, then I would have been stuck to three bedroom houses. I don't think there's, there's one house in there, I believe, and I'm not positive, that's three bedroom, everything else is four bedroom in there, maybe even five, I think a few. But so it's the tracks of land, but when you, if you really know, and I've looked at the maps in town, there's, it's like these fifteen, eighteen. Cause once you add in the stormwater and all these other things, the easements the right away, there's not the farmer's field of like, like Strong Road by the Fields where I grew up there. Those pieces that are, you know, there, what's what was that, thirteen or fourteen lots? Those are kind of gone. There's a few left, but they're being farmed, they're being used and they're protected. But those easier tracks are gone, so everything that's become available, Fitch Farm Land, I had no wetlands. The engineer that walked it, the conservation could not believe it, like it was unbelievable. The piece on East Street, wetlands, so it's like, like Paul had said, the the nice attractive pieces of land. They're not as attractive anymore because the 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 nice pieces are are gone, they've been used, they've, you know, they've been taken up. So you put some wetlands, you put your stormwater in it, all these factors, that's why it's like, you looked at East Street for an example, and you you look at that flat piece of paper. And we come up with a number. We have to look at all these other hurdles, the topography, the soils, the perk tests, the wetlands, the natural heritage, I mean, there's a whole checklist, I've had multiple people bring. Hey, my aunt's gonna sell this land or a realtor brings it to me and I go, okay, what's natural heritage say? Uh the turtle or the whatever is all over it, okay, get it out of that and come back to me. Cause it's it's, you know, it's a deal breaker, or you get a fifty acre parcel that has natural heritage and you have seven acres you can use. And someone wants an exorbitant amount of money, the number, it's, you know, it's the numbers working. And it just, it seems, yes, I'm gonna say with Cindy, there's probably, the two projects that, you know, I'm speaking about, I can tell you, I can't get any more in there. I just physically can't.
And you're saying they're they're not available in Southampton, i- is this feel like a exercise in frustration? I mean, if there isn't even gonna be any good lots available to do something that's gonna trigger this, that's that's.
I mean, that's why you gotta.
I think, I think there are, Cindy, I think there are, I just, like I said to Jim, I I I feel like it's, they have a pile of money.
Yeah, yeah.
And all he can buy is chocolate milk. And if he could go to the store and buy two percent low fat skim, you have more options, so it's like, I guess, how do you get? I feel your frustration and it's, you know, I don't know the inner workings of it, but that's what I'm getting and gathering from that, so it's, how do we broaden, open that up? To go for the diversity, to go for the affordable, but try to do it, we have to be a little bit creative, we don't have sewers. I don't think we're ever gonna have sewers in my lifetime, I don't ever see it. Cause not once has anyone talked about, let's run sewer down the bike path and we put the bike path in. There's sewer at the end of the bike path and he sent them, do they have the capacity?
I don't know.
Feedback, I get different feedback whether he sent would welcome that or not, so yeah, it's hard to say.
Right.
Even if we decide that our goal with the um inclusionary bylaw is to just get the money in lieu of. We still need to have the threshold be something that actually trims it, otherwise we're never gonna get that money in lieu of. So I think that would be my goal for the future, not today, is to just relook at that number and see what might be usable, although it's how much it's up.
Yeah, and I think what Cindy was really asking was back when you were building, you did build that, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name.
Fitch Farm.
Fitch Farm, and the number was nine, if it was seven and you could only fit nine parcels, would you have still have fit? Try, you know, go for the other two for affordable housing, or would you have just stuck at the seven?
And 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 partly, Ryan.
I mean, I. It's a rife question, yeah.
Partly Ryan, you said, you knew that.
But that's.
So hold on, so.
You knew that people wanted four bedroom houses.
Right.
And so that's a market driven situation, this is an attractive community to live in, it's a great community. They were people, I and I I'm I'm just trying to uh to put into what I think of your words, which is you wanna sell to what the buyers want. Yet, we know, Jim, that there are people can't even live in Southampton because they can't afford it and they want only a three bedroom house or a very small house. Like you used examples of various streets in in town that were built, you know, in the fifties or the sixties, you know, and and.
Every person.
That isn't, that isn't mark the market these days.
Right, every every individual who lives in that four or five bedroom house who wants that house, every one of those kids in those bedrooms is not gonna be able to afford. A house in Southampton as they age, that is the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I.
It's well, I was.
Cause you are, I mean, you're looking at two people that grew up in Southampton.
Yeah, and I had to live with my parents for six years in order to build a house on my husband's family lot, like this, and this goes to dance question about why.
Joy, I.
Wait, hold on, let me finish, this goes to dance question about why we are only applying the inclusionary law to businesses versus individuals. Because at the end of the day, you are a business, developers are a business, they're willing to the market, right, you're, I'm not, I'm not bolting you for that, but I have a businessman, I understand.
Right, it's right.
Correct, so.
That's right.
Business is business and it's your job and you you wanna make money, I'm here in a position like, we have money, how do we make inclusionary law a partnership between developers? And the housing authorities so that we can have, we can have the affordable housing and you guys can, we can help you meet the market that you need to make.
Well, you can, I mean, there's just, there has to be a happy, happy medium, but to go back to your seven and your nine, I mean, that's case by case. I have to look at the length of the road, I mean, yeah, it, I am for profit. And I had this conversation with Cindy outside last week, I am a hunter gatherer, however you wanna shake it. A little backdrop on me, I bought my first house in Southampton, I was twenty five, twenty six, we moved here, I was first or second grade. My parents worked very hard, numerous jobs, did a lot of different things, put us through college, I'm not looking for a sympathy card. I worked very hard to get where I'm at and I've continued to live in Southampton, I have bought multiple houses in Southampton and I stay here. Do I do developments in town? Yes, do I do things that I feel is just and fit? I'm not here to try and disgrace the town or change it that, you know, I worked for the farmer down the street, and we rode on the hay wagon, we got a moxie at Extra Mart. I mean, I I'm forty three years old, so like, I lived the the part of town, we used to ride snowmobiles to the to the uh uh the Whale Inn in Goshen, like. There's houses here now, so things have changed and people have, so I get it, there's a threshold and there's things and we all have choices in life and it, you know, I'm not trying to get. And and it's not a personal attack any way, shape or form to me, where I'm at is cause I worked hard, I saved my money and I did what my parents taught me. Everybody has choices, you live with your parents, it whatever you live, that's great. You know, we all do different things to get to that point, you could have went to East Hampton, and correctly, but wrong, chose not to live in your parents' basement. Or Westfield or Hoyoke or Springfield and bought a house that would have fit in your budget and hung your hat and called it a day, correct, correct? If you tried to do that.
No, I'm not gonna go into my.
But I'm just, no, I I just, I wanna defend myself because you should back there.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not attacking you, that's that's the point, and it's not a person.
Yes.
Well, I know it was a little bit of a personal, kind of.
I apologize, I am not here to attack you, I appreciate the fact that you're a businessman and you have been able to do what you have been able to do.
Yes.
Right.
I'm not attacking you at any point, I just want you to see the point of view that because of the business that you've been doing, Southampton isn't affordable. For the people that have grown up here.
It's not you.
And and it's not you, not, you're the only person who's done that, it's everyone and I'm trying, and you're you're here as a developer, so I wanna like shout it out to all the developers.
The mom's. Right.
How do we make the inclusionary bylaw something that you guys can work with and we can help you work with? And and is it lowering the number so that you do have to come to the table and we do have to help you figure out a plan because we're willing to do that? But we, but what you help them trigger that, because the nine isn't triggering, the ten isn't triggering it.
So Paul, you were on the board when John implemented the, so I mean, obviously you got your data from somewhere, I wasn't involved.
When John implemented what, the inclusionary bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So like, I mean, let's ask the question, I wasn't involved in any of those meetings, I wasn't doing development.
I think Jerry Smith brought it, uh.
I thought it was five in a week, got got renegotiated to ten or something.
Yeah, it was negotiated, it was some respect, is my understanding, I wasn't there.
I mean, he he brought that in from P B P C, that model, he didn't, he didn't, he didn't like it at all, but.
Okay. So how many towns, I mean, let's, Richard, have an inclusionary?
And and that's my question, what other towns can Southampton, not at Southampton.
I'll I'll get information then.
Yes.
Where where has it worked in the household?
And that has.
In a similar situation, what?
We talked about the pavement in Liloa, it's got the formula there. Um yes, you have a cycle contribution, I think there is a significant difference in dollar amounts.
There is, yeah.
Uh my guess, cycle contribution is probably the fifteen thousand or twenty thousand.
Mm hmm, but it's a start, yeah.
And and this, you're looking at a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in pavement Liloa. Now, that sounds like a lot of money.
No, that's a lot less than building that than than.
It's a lot less than building that's the house. So I raised, back to my question I raised earlier, do you want a pavement Liloa that encourages the developer to make a payment? Or you want to set the pavement Liloa formula at a level that the developer says, I'm gonna build a house instead?
Or walk away.
I think it should be, I think it should be parallel, and I think it should ultimately be, cause then it helps them acquire more funds. So yeah, one fifty, sure, as a developer, I wanna do fifteen lots and that's the number, if it works, I might come in and write the check, cause I.
But that's not, that's not equal to.
Right, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if it's in line and if it costs three and a quarter to build the affordable, then it's on the developer with the planning board to say, hey. Okay, this is real, real money, not not one shot out of my mouth that I said, no, keep it at a hundred, keep it a hundred fifty, put it, put your money where your mouth is, make it real, so. And on the sidewalk fund, I know it's completely different, but just a comparison, John Furman, who was a peer engineer for the town, did did a cost estimate. Came to Paul, gave it to him, said this is what it was, wasn't me saying, Paul, I think it's twelve five, he said this is the exact number, cut the check and move forward. So if there is something that's in line and it's parallel, it helps you, it can help the developer, it can help the community.
Right, you know, it's the ultimate, that would be great if you could get to that sweet spot where everyone, you know, it's win, win, win.
It all comes down to the dollars and cents.
You know.
I agree.
Yeah.
And Ryan is absolutely right, because back when this was drafted, uh shortly after I was on the board a few years. The meeting room was was full of builders and realtors, I don't know if anybody remembers that, but it was very contentious meeting and these guys all had the same tink tune. How we can't make any money if we do it that way, and that was the, that was the theme.
Is that how it got negotiated to?
Right, so that's why, that's why Richard's research, because, you know. No offense, but I can understand how a a group of like minded folks, you know, realtors, developers, et cetera, are gonna say in unison, it's not gonna work for us. Um so having a more, I don't know if objection is the right word, but just some additional data from what it was wrong you're doing can can make it real.
French marks.
Because, you know, I.
That's natural.
I didn't, right, I think we're really, you know, just to get back a little bit, um Ryan, I I really appreciate, I know we all do, I think I can speak for Joy. There were no attacks here, I just, I'm being here, cause you give me at least an utmost respect and.
No, I just only appreciate you being here, cause you give me at least an utmost respect and. I I do, and I and I and I just.
A respect that we don't have, so it's really, you're doing a good service.
Right. Yeah, and I apol, I do apologize, it just, it it unfortunately like, it's this this generation, I say it, and it's like the Me Too movement of, you know, and I deal with it. With this younger generation, it's.
You may not wanna go there.
No, but it just, it's just the way, the way of the world, it's like, you know, we all have choices, we're all dealt a different deck of cards.
Yeah, but.
I never thought in a million years I'd be sitting here.
But Ryan, do you think it's okay for people to do all the right things? Let's say I did all the right things, I went to law school, I'm a lawyer, my husband got a bachelor's, he has a great job. We make good money and we still can't afford to live in the town that we grew up in, how is that fair or right?
I can't speak, my sister lives in East Hampton, or Northampton, yeah.
I know, and we, and we would've chose to live in those places, but our families were, yeah, and she can't afford here.
She can't, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, I mean, I, and I, I'm fortunate, yes, I'm fortunate.
And, and that's, but I don't, I. I wanna make opportunities for people to come and live in the town and grow up in a town where they can, that's all, that's.
And I'm, right, and I'm here, I mean, I'm here with two different hats, but, like, the development side, and I'm talking, like, let, yeah, let's make it real, so there's options. I don't think you should make it one option, I think there should be two options, but make them parallel.
Yeah.
Cause what if they get, comes to a need where, you know, someone does a project, you gotta be the big box thinker, ten years down the road, someone puts in eight duplexes somewhere on a piece of land, and they need to get some of your funding to help with the septic and mass works kick, like, who knows, like, all the what ifs. So, you're able to do that, and if you have the money that's in there, you can help with those, those projects, if we're successful and get one in. But I don't think it's wrong to try and start and get it so we can, you can do something, and do a onesie twosie and get some momentum. Cause it also, keep in mind, it triggers the management side, which I think, you know, it's like a newborn. It just doesn't start walking and feeding itself in two years on its own, like, you gotta, you gotta nurture and take care of it. So there's all these moving parts that, you know, as long as you look at it, and you can't be, no one can be perfectly thorough and have everything to a T. I mean, that's why we're here to go through this, the old bylaws are old and antiquated, and, I mean, we struggle in the zoning war when things come to us, and I'm saying to myself, a guy wants a cupola, cupola, and the max height is thirty five feet, well, the cupola puts it at thirty six. It's like, why are you even here? Like, you know, a three foot, I, you know, we've never denied one, and it's an accessory, I'm just using example, accessory building can't match the roofline of your house. Like, to me, that's crazy, if it matches, it's gonna look way more appealing and way more fitting than a neighborhood. I mean, we've had tons of those. It, it goes back to, you know, these things, these things.
Right, to Paul's point, there are easy buttons that we could push.
Right, and we've gone through those, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, I wanna say, and Jim, and I probably disagree on this, I don't think four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. You know, I mean, it's a lot of money, but is it really a lot to do anything really effective? I mean, I think we need to build our funds and engine it to build our funds, and, and so we, I mean, I look at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you can't buy a house in Southampton for that. So, you know, so I'm, I don't make four hundred.
So maybe it's eight times the median.
We're not. It will, like, we have a meeting Monday, so we'll talk about this a little bit more, but I mean, we got a ton of money, but I'm not sure it's a lot of money.
So how do you look at raising the capital and raising the funds, but not doing it in a way of extortion? I think, you, you gotta be fairly realistic too.
Right.
Well, there's lots of ways to build affordable housing fund, there's lots of ways to get the money for a housing investment, this is just one of the.
But.
But I think, true, you're gonna research that, right?
Yeah, I think it's.
We've gotta move on, break through the fog down.
I'm not for that.
Um, could we jump to, which one, were you gonna tackle next, the multi-family? Yeah, okay.
Uh, basically, I would suggest a check way you have and throw it out, be right.
Which, uh, number?
Take it, what we have.
Seven dash one ten. Um, I think the existing Monty family would be by, in, in certain relation, like discriminatory housing bylaw, and that group of now. Um, the open space apartment alone. Zero for elderly and one bedroom. Five hundred square feet for two bedroom. But when you get to three bedroom, it's two thousand square feet.
What page, which, what page are you wanting to work?
Page three.
Page three.
Um, when this, it's two thousand square feet per bedroom for three or more.
Three bedrooms.
Therefore, for three bedroom, it's six thousand square feet of open space.
Wow.
Open space, of course.
Who wrote that?
For four bedrooms, it's eight thousand square feet. Now, that's important because under D C D guidance, you need to have, especially rental housing, you need, you should have a distribution of housing sizes, not just one, two bedroom. A lot of communities, senior housing in one or two bedrooms, and D C D and their policies, you're required to have a certain percentage in three, four bedroom and two bed, one bedroom, so that families can move into, into an area. So, I, I, when I read this, I said, no developer's going to do Monty family in Southampton with the, with this open space apartment, they'll do a forty B, so I didn't throw it out. So if your objective under this is to have good design guidelines and standards to encourage or to accommodate those developers that want to do Monty family, then we need to revisit the open space completely. And have something much more balanced and, uh, between the housing cycles. And, so that, that, I'm very struck, that was very significant. Uh, I would also, uh, let's see, let's see, B one. At least eight hundred lot shall be billable or landlot, so it's not over sixty seven. My question about the environmental standards, does that apply to other housing types? Or are we simply applying it to Monty family?
Yeah, baby.
And if you're being more strict with Monty family, again, they developers don't say, uh, Monty, Monty family.
Just a guy. I know.
Ryan, one question that you skipped over, section one A, minimum street frontage of two fifty, RV zoning, zoning is one thirty.
It's quite, it's quite a test deposit, he's quarantined.
So you're looking to increase that?
That's what it is right now, I'm not increasing, I'm just codifying what's already there.
No, it's one thirty.
The existing Monty family section says two fifty.
No.
You didn't write it, sounds like.
No, that's why I'm, I mean, I know, RV is one thirty, I think R, R is one forty, RN is one fifty, and one sixty, industrial's two hundred.
Maybe we should update it to actually reflect the laws.
Minimum.
I just took what's existing in this section's land by law and codify, I didn't change the other.
No, I just, I'm curious, cause.
What's, what are you, what are you looking at?
So, so the number one.
Mental standards under one.
Yeah, number three, minimum street frontage of two fifty.
We're, uh, what, RV?
Yeah, RV, the zone is one thirty for a single family, and I, I know we've issued permits.
Yeah, RV is one thirty, RV.
But what the same, Ryan, is the same for Monty family in RV, they had, had two hundred fifty feet.
Right.
Multi-family, this is multi-family.
He did the math, he just.
For Monty family, they're saying you have to two fifty.
It's multi-family.
So what?
So this is just another barrier to multi-family, why is there this requirement?
So what, so what, so what, the definition of multi-family is two units or more, is that correct?
You go back and see what you put in your zone by law, but it should be at least four units, it should be Monty family.
Oh, it's not just.
Not, not. So I think it'd be, I think it must, triplex and Monty family.
I think it needs, multi, then it needs to be clarified that multi-family is four units or more, yeah, or whatever.
Multi is more than.
Or, or whatever it is, and I'm sure it's any definitions are very hit, so.
Cause I mean, you're multi.
All right, that makes the frontage a little more.
Yeah, multi-family, duplex to me is the same thing, that's all.
Right. But if you do. With you, so, okay.
If you do the multi-family development, I would argue that you don't need to have a wire front. For instance, if you do a Monty family development, that's where you didn't, uh, five duplexes on single parcel property. That parcel could have fifty foot of frontage. Sufficient to provide access to it.
It's deep, you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. If you're.
And I can fix the whole D E P, like sewer and.
It, it doesn't, but, but it'd be, the frontage should only be fifty feet wide. Because it's one parcel, it's not, it's not subdivision, it's just one parcel. And under this definition, under this standard, you couldn't do that, you'd have to have two hundred fifty feet of frontage, which eliminates a lot of parcels for.
So Richard, are you saying that basically, for a multi-family, you could essentially flag lot something?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not the way our bylaw is written right now, though.
But, but you could, if, if, again.
Saying you could.
If you want, if want to.
Do they have any exemptions as a housing authority to do that?
No.
They'd have to come in like a regular applicant to the zoning for a reduction in frontage.
Yeah, and it wouldn't meet the standard for variance.
Yeah, improvements of higher.
But you could write, is there zone, yeah, you could write in the zone bylaw, and this, to me, now, my mind focused right now is just on recalcation, formatting of the existing bylaw. But when you're getting substantive, my approach has always been, what is it that people are wanting to do that they had to get variances or had to get some type of relief for, that the community wants done? Write the zone bylaw so they can do it, and don't have to go zoning board of hills or, they can just do it.
Just make it easier by not having to go.
So, so you can make your list up for us.
Yeah.
Of what they've turned down because of.
Things people have fought for.
So you're basically saying that the housing or, or open space or whatever would have an exemption from zoning regulation?
No, not, not exempting, not, not.
It's codified, so this, this is what we allow.
Just have the zone.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you're trying to go for an exemption, so you have to go before, this is what we allow. In extreme example, fifty feet of frontage for a multi-family, and it's either a very long straight piece of property, or it's a flag lot or whatever, but it's, it's allowed. It's, there's no appeal, there's no.
So if you do, so let's think about it, though, if you do a reduction in frontage, which I agree, you just have to put, like, per bedroom or per unit, some kind of square footage. Cause you don't want somebody to come with you with a, you know, with a twelve unit, and try to put on an acre and a half.
But, but this section.
Well, the septic, the septic would.
Right, but I, I mean, you know what I'm saying, like, twelve units, not even three acres, you'd have to, you'd have to have it for every bedroom or every unit, it has to be a certain square footage, if you're going for, cause you're taking a non-conforming lot, you're essentially, you know, you're making it conforming without, you're superseding the, the, the zoning bylaws are there in place to keep the structure and integrity and, and the town together, so you're avoiding that hurdle because of the, you're, you're able to do that, but, uh, developers could, but it's a good way, it can open a pathway for you folks to definitely do that, I mean, I don't think you're gonna get.
I don't think that's the trend we're trying to see from the governor on down, is to try to figure out how we can expand housing options, and it's, it's the, the local zoning is usually the barrier.
Right.
And they're promoting, you know, the, the ready, um, availability of, you know, creating duplexes, multi-family that don't skirt, basically allow, it's, it's gonna be a, a battle between quote, the, the look of the town versus the demand and the need for more units. And, that's me where the rubber meets the road.
Right, but it opens up the potential, if you've got a, I'm sure there's a bunch of parcels in town that are eight or ten or twelve acres that don't have enough frontage, or they're missed by three feet, five feet, fifty feet, and you could do something, and if you put something in, I mean, I think you would agree, I don't know, I'm not putting words in my mouth, about the size with the units, cause you don't wanna make it super condensed, cause then I think you're gonna change a little bit of the town, but I think you could fit them in, and there's, you know, there's parcels that are tight that open up. And if you, you know, you're able to put two units on both sides, and, and, yeah, I mean, you could tailor that, eh, essentially, to benefit the housing authority. Because I don't think you're gonna get a ton of, you know, it might, you might get a few, but you're not gonna get, in my thought, a hundred developers to run in to do this. You know, but I think it'll make, then again, it, it could, it could take down one of the walls to help you get through, to gain some momentum.
Well, I mean, as a developer, you would, it's much easier to say, oh, I can do this, rather than, I wanna do it, but I've gotta go through an appeal process.
And, yeah, and you have to prove, right, and you have to, right, and you have to prove all these things, and it, it's, it, right. If I come to you with a ten acre parcel, and I wanna put in two houses, and I have fifty feet of frontage, you know, it's a little much, I'm looking for a reduction of like eighty five percent. That's why I have the fifty foot threshold is for the roadway, you know, for a road.
Well, that's in, that's down the road, these, uh, recalculating, right?
Improvements, what do you wanna call it?
Changing the language.
Right.
Right.
But, uh, you, you can, pardon, my, my, my view on this is that, what is the community's objective? Community's objective is to allow multi-family development, not to have barriers for it. Then look at what are the issues of concern? Is it buffering? Okay, specify that. If it's how it fits in to join properties, for instance, ideally, uh, flex would love bylaw that we said, hey, if your lot is less than the minimum required for the adjacent property, you have to have fifty foot vegetated buffer around the perimeter of your development. That way, you can't tell the difference from one property to the other, because you got a vegetated buffer there. Uh, there are ways to deal with, with those externalities, those impacts on joint properties, and still give the developer flexibility on how to design within that contract.
All right, now, a case in point, Ryan, and I brought up at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. You live right across the street, or your, your company's right across the street there on College Highway where the Polish.
You know, Paris, Paris House, yeah.
There's a couple of calls in the recent weeks, people that wanna build either duplexes or, or condos or something in there, and the guy says, um, how, how can I just go in and change the zoning so I can build something there? I said, well, I'm sorry, but it's not that easy, you know, you just don't do that. So, as you know, those lots aren't deep, you've got the conservation area and the floodplain down behind it.
You've got floodplain conservation.
Here it is languishing in a commercial business district all these years, and who knows how much longer it'll keep on, uh, languishing there. Why couldn't the zoning be changed there somehow for a, a mixed use, because you got the, the commercial Polish National Credit Union on that side? But the zoning changed, so you could develop some housing in those areas because the lots aren't that deep.
Yeah, you'd have to look at, I mean, well, I abstained from the zoning war because I was at a butter, but essentially, you had a, a small retail store come in. And the hurdles they had was, uh, natural heritage, uh, I think it was turtles, conservation, riverfront, and floodplain. And they tried, cause they came into the zoning war, that when I abstained for a reduction in the parking lot, because our regulations for our parking is astronomical for the square footage, so they came in for the reduction of that, which I believe they gave to, but as the company worked through it, they couldn't fit the building, the parking, the septic because of all the environmental hurdles, and I agree with you, like, it's unfortunate those people lost their house, and they're trying to sell that land, continue living, and sure, a, a duplex right there, or a triplex would be a perfect spot for it.
All right, and that was my next question, do, does, does a regular duplex or condo or anything undergo those same scrutiny with, with national heritage and everything else?
Yeah.
To build one of those?
Yeah, everything, natural, natural heritage is not discouraged.
So they'd have to jump through the same hoops.
Right, but I, I believe there's a small area, because, I mean, I, I, they're my neighbors, so they talk to me, they're like, they're elderly, they're like, I, I, we don't understand this, we've lived here, we've cut the grass, we've done that, I'm like, this is what natural heritage does, they go out, they grit things, it doesn't make sense, you gotta spend money, you gotta spend time, and you gotta fight it to push it back. So the developer was just like, you know what, we're not gonna spend time and money, we're gonna go find another parcel that's a, a little bit easier, right? Cause when you engage natural heritage, you're talking a minimum of a year to, to, to navigate through, but, you know, to answer, answer your question, you, you, you could do that, but you still trigger all those things.
We were gonna build a pedestrian handicap accessible bridge of the Bachelor Burke, which had a nice view of the Connecticut River, and had engaged natural, looked in that church process. And they, and our botanist found some endangered plant life. That she said was pretty rampant over there, but it was endangered, therefore, we couldn't touch it. So we couldn't build pedestrian bridge for handicap accessibility, and we did some trails, but it really deprived disabled population of opportunity, a really nice, uh, mouth of the Bachelor Burke. We had a developer who was doing a condo development, and their property fell within the, uh, natural heritage body line. And they agreed to two acres in conservation restriction, nailed that down, changed the planning board for special permit, the, the six month special permit process, got approved on the planning board, and guess what natural heritage did right after that? They revised their natural heritage body lines, took the property out of the endangered species program, They revised their natural heritage body lines, took the property out of the endangered species program. But they already had the two acre conservation restriction secured from the developer. So the developer's out the two acres. Even though it's not long in the natural heritage.
If if you have some time and you want to go on Mass GIS and natural heritage mapping and you look at it, and if you know your area around. It'll blow your mind the way that the map, it it just stops, it goes, it it it's like, but like I said, once that's there. You've gotta go and defend yourself. And I mean, I've had it on other properties that I've owned and you're saying to yourself, okay, what's, you know, how's the fight? They're not saying that it's there. They've got it in a location or something, so they just poof, they put the grid on there.
And most developers, if you give them a choice of spending six months and thousands of dollars go through a fight. Or. They can resolve it with a permitting entity within thirty days. And they can still make their development work. They won't do, they won't fight. Because their their business is to get development going. And if I'm spending six months fighting this, not knowing what the outcome's gonna be.
Fighting this, but.
And I've lost five months of what I could have been building on. And that's been my experience with my forty-three years is that developers. They, it's gotta be something really significant for them to really fight. Because otherwise, it's costing them too much money to engage and belong fight.
And I'd just like to remind everybody of the time, thanks for speaking.
Go ahead, Richard.
I raised questions about how some of the site environment standards can compare. Let's see, B two. Some of the terminology, both multifamily developers shall be compatible with adjacent land uses. Saying to be helpful, give some concept of what is meant by compatible.
Yes.
Um, in that way, because.
Physically.
Uh, from my experience, your board will say it's never compatible because I got seen packing home. And there's no way that's gonna be retained. So you need to get some guidance as to what is meant by that. There are some vague wording such as in B three and B four or under, yeah. Not overload, mute area or any other area of the town be undue to subject to hazards. Undue traffic congestion. So there needs to be some more clarity as to why this intended by that, opposed that.
Like those undue traffic, what does that mean?
Undoed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Unduly.
Too much subjective wording.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's vague wording, that that's not subjective, it's very vague, that's that's my concern. And one E. Yeah, required screening buffers, can that be part of the required open space, recreation area? It doesn't address that, and I think that needs to be clarified if it is or it's not. Because if it's not, then you're requiring for three bedroom unit, three bedroom multifamily developer. Six thousand square feet of open space or recreation space for each unit. And then the buffer is screened in addition to that. In so that really makes it difficult for developer to even consider doing that. Yeah. One F suggests that the planning board is the approval board. Yet. It also, let's see, I had a question here about. One one provision and one G. Which I don't have on this page. Uh, suggests that the. Border pills can approve a variation from plan. And I would suggest to you that there needs to be one permitting authority, not two. The planning board proves it and that should be it. It's uh, if you start having. Planning board proving then not for pre-variation, not pre-variation. It it is just chaos.
So I think that's because it's set up now, every two family or greater has special permit, correct, Paul?
Did you, did your board realize that most of these changes are taking away a lot of your. Moody's now?
Yeah, so it means less meetings and more for you.
It was that.
Best for rain.
You don't have that.
I will share that.
We're done leaning in.
When I was planning working South Hadley, one of the things we did, I I met several times at one of the. Chairs of ZDA early on. And he's always complaining about the special permit this and that. We changed his zoning bylaw that planning board was a special permit authority for all special permits and site plan review authority. And they were, he was thrilled with that because he said, I especially his variances and appeals.
Right.
And they they really didn't know how to handle the special permits because they really fit in more with site plan review, subdivision review, stuff like that. And so we made that change with their unanimous support.
I think site plan should totally stay with you guys.
Yeah, and it's even worse though with the stormwater that, you know, they didn't get everything done in one meeting, like rather than go to you and.
Yeah, and then, but you guys usually have an engineer for peer review, which you bring in, which in my, how many ever years I've been on the zoning board. I've never had an engineer come in because we've never had, I think maybe one site plan or it was reduction in parking.
So that's something anyone think about as well as how how. Does that help streamline it? Well, if I apply the special permit, they do site plan review at the same time as part of it, it's just.
Right, but again, from back from a thirty thousand foot perspective, in my opinion. Our goal here is to open this up to make it easier. So in that sense, there'd be a logical reduction in appeals and special that you would deal with. Because we're trying to eliminate experience. Now, as a as a zoning.
Right, so so like Richard's doing and I've done it parallel, we started this with Larry Smith. I mean, I went through other towns and, you know, I live an exciting life, I'll read the zoning bylaw and go through. And it's a comparison because it's like, you know, obviously like like we have a member on our board that that works in Westfield and she's pretty well versed with theirs. Now, do we need everything that Westfield maybe has? Probably not, but you know, there's, if you take a little bit from, everybody's got a recipe that's working to some extent. And if you take it and bring it all together to to kind of fit and suit your needs, and that's what I've done. Because we sat down and went through a bunch of stuff with Larry and I had other things and and Larry and I had gone back and forth on some of these. I says, hey, this town is this or, and he's like, you know, you're right, I was on, you know, he was pretty heavily involved in other towns. And those things work and you try to play, you can't cure it all, but you play with the scenarios of of what it is. So I mean, if you can find something and you have something, you know, I'll look and see. But I think, I mean, my gut tells me not to run off the rails, but if we can look at parcels that don't necessarily have the frontage, but you can do the multifamily, I think you can do some very nice projects. And I think there's a lot of potential there.
Could you?
I'd agree.
Could you make a note of that also, you know, what what the the zones, who would be present permitted in most zones, all zones? However, you might look at it, probably not in all zones, but.
No, you'd have to have public water if you gotta, because otherwise you trigger a public drinking. Water system with a well and there's a.
Seems like a natural way to restrict it, I've heard that before too, without the town water.
Yeah.
Yours.
You will need after a certain threshold, you need an operator to maintain that with the D E T, so.
Okay, anything else in multifamilies you wanna bring to Richard's attention on your board before we close this section out?
Other than just again, I think it bears repeating, I think in general, any way that we can reduce the barriers. Similar with the theme I'm hearing not only in other towns, but across the state, again, starting with the governor. That, you know, we can reduce the barriers there are to to creating duplexes, strip buses, whatever. I think that's that should be our goal of this.
Good.
Yeah, my focus has been at this stage is to codify and reformat. And then once I've done that, I've just gone back and things are a question to make. My my recommendation board is that board needs to focus for the May town meeting. To get adopted a reformat, a codified zoning bylaw. And then bring back subsequent changes to sections after that's done. Otherwise, what you have is inconsistent references and you already got enough that already.
Yeah, um, Richard laid out a timeframe for us when we hired him. He put together a plan, hopefully by twenty twenty-three. So this town meeting in May coming up in twenty twenty-two will be the recodification. And then in twenty-three will be more zoning, I don't know how how much we we go for. It may not all happen in the spring of twenty-three, but we're on the right path, he's on a fast track. The thing that's going to maybe put a crepe in it is funding. And I think I asked Jim, are you are you funded by the town in any way, budget of any sort, no?
Zoning board only has like three hundred dollars.
And the funds you do have are restricted, correct? That's what I hear you.
C P C from.
You can't, you can't offer them for any consulting or anything?
I don't believe so, they pursue grants, I'm not sure about.
Okay.
So so Paul. We can ask for, you know, the next seat, because Sierra sits on the C P C.
Right, there is an administrative fund, I believe in Virginia, if you're watching, I am not an expert on this. For a hundred percent to Virginia because, but there is a, at least worth inquiring about whether any of the administrative funds can be used. Under these, and and she's completely, you know, at the mercy of what the laws are under the state of the C P A.
Well.
So that's a possibility.
So with with this.
And it'd be fun dealing consulting for to.
For Richard, he he gave us a quote to complete this front to back. And it was probably within reason, maybe with this inclusion area and some of this housing, it's gonna trigger some more money. But it was upwards, the total cost about twenty thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand?
Did you make substantive changes, it was about twenty-three thousand.
Okay, so.
But we will tell you that inclusion is on loan can chew you forever.
Chew up a lot, yeah.
We didn't notice.
It's a real.
Yeah, really.
It's a real one.
But look at how much we have popped up now.
Perhaps that's why you guys said.
Forget it. I think, but I think that's why it's helpful if we're as a group able to bring things to the table. And and discuss and talk about it, I mean, I'm not trying to take money out of your pocket, but it it kind of joins things and you can beat them out instead of. You know, we're spending, it's it's always the funding, I mean, Paul's been great on this and it's, we get going, we get momentum, we had money. He was doing things and COVID hit and then, you know, Larry wanted to travel, so it was like.
So just for instance, right now with the bills that our consultant has. Submitted so far for the first three months of his contract, I've got like sixty-seven hundred dollars left. We have an amendment that I'm gonna have voted on tonight to extend his work for another five thousand dollars. So after that, there's seventeen hundred dollars left in the pot and I don't know how much more I can get accomplished. So by spring town meeting. Because we haven't been funded for several years, we've been self-supporting with fees. So I'm gonna have to go to town meeting and ask for some funding out of free cash or the some enterprise fund of somewhere. So we can complete this project, otherwise, all this momentum is gonna be lost.
Can all of us ask though, because I'm just, it seems like if something's on the docket and it's thirty grand, people go, ah, but if it's five, five, five.
Right, and and that's why I asked you in an email if you had any funding, because this is very important to your committee, you know. And any help we can get.
So we'll have Sierra pursue.
Yeah, check it out.
So, you know.
And free cash is the other option if we need to divide it into.
Right, so if each, if Z B A and you and the planning go just for some some money. So we can keep this momentum up the town meeting, then we won't have any delays and we can keep going. Because because there's no, our, most of our fees came from subdivisions or the biggest hit was the marijuana store. There's no subdivisions on the horizon, I don't think we're gonna get another marijuana business anytime soon, it'd be nice, but that was the bulk of. We had some, you know, good cash there for a while, but now it's completed.
Face the five thousand dollar amendment due on Monday, we'll take it through again, the five dollar reformat and codify it.
Just so that, so that five thousand amendment will get us through the town meeting portion that you wanna do.
Right.
Okay.
I would say one of the goals may be all the work that you're doing for the H P P. Folding up those lessons learned and that knowledge into the into the bylaws, there's there's some work to be done just in that, so.
We we need your money, Jim.
Well, you're poor then.
Yeah.
Very, very. You're very, you're very poor.
But it's also, I don't know, more than we do.
No, that prints everything out on their own paper and they hear about it every time.
No, but, you know, I hate to ask or beg for some money, but on the same token, it's very, you know, it's something that you people it's feel strong about. This is the forum that is carrying it through, so if we can get any help, it would be beneficial.
We are, yeah.
I think it's also part of the housing production plan is to review to.
Yeah, it has to, it has to go to some.
I think it's doing, it's doing.
Otherwise, a lot of documents they.
Yeah, it's definitely dovetails, it's not a, it's not a big ask, Paul.
And I also know that when I met with the board in September, what I heard very clearly was. The board hasn't worked on this like four years and they'd like to get it finished. And the schedule I gave was to get it done in eighteen months as opposed to another four or five years. So by the time you're not four or five years, you gotta go back and revisit it like that.
Well, the reason it's been taking so long is that our former consultant, and don't get me wrong, he was Larry's top notch and we we really think highly of him. He would go to Mexico from December to April, so we lost, each year we lost, you know, five, five months out of them. So we could, we could never get anything sustained.
I don't drive more than three weeks at a time.
You better, you better not.
No, part of, part of them voting any five grand, that's one of the things.
We need.
Here, we'll track you down for.
Okay, we better.
Do you drive down Texas or California?
Are we gonna touch on the cluster development or not?
Do you want, is that, you you wanna go with that or you wanna wait?
We can just start, restart there at the next meeting.
That's the easy one, how about no hazardous waste funds? Just throw that one away.
No, no, I just, I wanna make sure, so you guys, would you like to adjourn your meeting, is that it? Or would you like to see what his questions are on the cluster development?
I think Cindy closed her computer and I was kind of like, that's.
That was me, my, my kids. We can talk other days, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not tonight.
Just saying.
So you wanna wait on that, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll wait on the cluster development and if there, if there are no further questions. For the housing board, then I'll ask you to call for your adjournment and then we'll continue with our meeting.
I may motion to adjourn the meeting, back and dead.
All right, call it a favor.
I, I, I. And I, wait, you're saying it, but I'm not saying it.
Oh, goodness.
You're okay.
Hi. Hey, hi, this is unanimous, Paul, we're adjourned.
Adjourned.
I can't believe you're gonna continue, but Cindy closed her laptop.
I was gonna say that.
What's this?
It's, it's, there's really nothing, I mean, like the list, so.
Thank you for coming on.
Bit of delight, thank you all.
Thank you for.
We even met together like a lot of years.